Star City Broadcasting presents the 2019 West Lafayette City Council Debate in partnership with the League of Women Voters, WBAA Radio, The Journal and Courier, NBC 16, and The Patriot 104.3 FM. Taking the stage tonight will be the candidates for West Lafayette City Council at Large facing off for the next hour uninterrupted.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for this live debate, the West Lafayette City Council at Large Candidates in 2019. I'm Chris Marisi-Vita, and I'll be moderating. Before we begin, a little bit of background information for you. The organizations hosting the forum had invited all candidates in all districts to participate, as well as the at-large candidates, but in some cases, those few candidates declined to participate or didn't respond in a timely fashion. So we are not presenting any of the district council races today for that reason. Under the League of Women Voters debate rules, there cannot be an empty seat, or an opponent must appear against another opponent. So we will move ahead now with the candidates for West Lafayette City Council at Large. That includes incumbents Steve Dietrich, Gerald Thomas, David Sanders, and newcomer challenger James Blanco. And how the debate will operate is each candidate will have two minutes to give an opening statement, then we'll begin asking questions developed by the panel, and they will have one minute to respond, and then 30 seconds to follow up for each question. James Blanco won the coin toss, and he will be going first to give his opening statement.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for being here, or for watching on the TV for Star City Broadcast. I'm James Blanco. I'm running for West Lafayette City Council, and I am a renter. I am a recent graduate of Purdue University, and I'm running to represent the working people, the students, and the renters of our great city. I'm from a working-class background myself. My mom is a former science teacher. I've worked at a factory. And I want to tell you that I am running to stick up for your interests. I will listen to you. I will show up at events. You will be able to see me. You will be able to talk with me. And I'm running to represent your interests. And I am proud to be running for West Lafayette City Council. And I'm asking for your vote.
Thank you, James Blanco. And next we'll hear from Steve Dietrich.
Good evening. I'd like to thank the League Women Voters, WBAA Radio, Star City Broadcasting, and everyone that showed up tonight. My name's Steve Dietrich. I'm running for reelection for the West Lafayette City Council as an at-large candidate. My wife, Mary, and I have been married for 42 years. She's a retired kindergarten teacher. We have two grown children and four grandchildren. I'm a product of Morton Elementary School, a graduate of West Lafayette High School, and Purdue University. As Chair of the Budget Finance Committee, I've worked closely with Mayor Dennis to keep the city services high while at the same time controlling our expenses. During most of my time as Chair, we've had zero increased budgets and still allowed the city to grow. I believe more needs to be done to enforce our current student -- current ordinances, excuse me, dealing with student rentals, to increase fire and personal safety, and reducing neighborhood infringement. Our city council meets but once a month to vote on some very important topics to all of us. We should not squander our time by pushing national political agendas that we cannot determine. We need to focus on the business at hand. My career as an investigator has taught me how to break down large problems into smaller, more solvable parts, and put them back together using innovative solutions. It's also taught me that to solve a problem, you need to fully understand the problem. As your representative on the council, I ask questions, and I challenge responses to make sure we know how the vote will impact us. I know and understand our community and the need for a strong relationship with Purdue University. Under Mayor Dennis's leadership, we've developed a very strong partnership. In many respects, West Lafayette is a world-class city because of our relationship with Purdue. We need to continue to strengthen that -- strengthen the symbiotic relationship. I grew up on Middleton Street in New Chauncey, and know the value of strong neighborhoods. I will fight to preserve and protect those neighborhoods. I bring to the council a strong belief in West Lafayette, exceptional analytical skills, and best of all, a common sense and fortitude to stand up for what is right. I've always based my votes on what I believe is best for West Lafayette. Again, my name is Steve Dietrich, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. And now we will hear from Councilor Sanders, David Sanders.
Hello. My name is David Sanders. I'm your city councillor at-large in West Lafayette. I'm an associate professor of biological sciences at Purdue University. Because I'm a college professor, I can speak for about 50 minutes without any interruption. I won't do that tonight, and I am finding this particular format a little confining because of that. But nevertheless, I'll try to share with you a little bit about who I am and what I stand for. So I actually work on issues of how viruses enter cells, and I've worked with the national government to try to prevent the spread of viruses from former states of the Soviet Union. I've worked for a long time on issues of sustainability, on issues of veterans' rights. Those are very dear to me. To tell a little bit about myself, I've lived here 24 years. All three of my sons have gone to the West Lafayette public schools. I am a member of a number of local civic and community organizations, and I've actually risen to be in leadership positions in a number of those organizations. I also am involved in Purdue Organization, Purdue Shared Governance, and so I'm in a unique position to deal with issues that impact both Purdue and the city of West Lafayette. But I will assure you, I will always be focused on the priorities of the city of West Lafayette. I'd also like to mention that I'm on the Traffic Commission, and in that capacity, I've listened to many of my constituents about various issues that they have. And I think that's one of the things that is very important to me as a councilman, is to respond to each one of the emails that I receive, to make sure that each person who speaks to me gets an answer either from me, or from the administration, or in terms of the creation of legislation that answers their concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. And now we'll hear from incumbent Gerald Thomas.
Good evening. My name's Gerald Thomas. I'm a third-term city councillor at-large in West Lafayette. I'm running for a fourth term here in this great city. My wife, Susan, and I have been married for 40 years. We lived in the Lafayette, greater Lafayette area for 40-plus years, about 30 years in West Lafayette. I have two sons. My son, oldest son Christopher, is a doctor intern at IU Health, working on his internship to be a transplant surgeon. And I have a younger son, Benjamin, who is a second semester graduate student at Purdue, working on criminal social justice. Twenty-some years ago, when Sonia Morgan asked me to run for city council, I told Sonia, "No, I'm not a politician. I don't like politics. I'm not interested." And every four years, she came back and asked me the same thing, and I told her the same answer, "No." When Sonia finally left office and Jan Mills came on board, they asked me to go to lunch, and I knew the question was coming. And that time, it just seemed right. It just seemed right that said, "It's time to do something good for the city of West Lafayette." And so I said, "Yes." And looking back now, I probably should have said yes twenty-some years ago, because this has been a great ride. I enjoy being a city councillor. I enjoy working on the city issues that are important to my constituents. I would like to focus on development within the city. Our city is growing. We need to have smart development within the city. We have issues with housing and traffic. Our city services are stellar. Our traction in recycling, our police and fire departments, our excellent city services. I want to continue to promote those services, and I'm also looking forward to working with the new ideas that are coming through the city of West Lafayette for our citizens. Again, my name is Gerald Thomas. I'd like for your vote on November 5th as city councillor at-large. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. The first question will go to Steve Dietrich, and that is, after the latest round of student-oriented high-rises and projects, West Lafayette has said it won't approve projects with more student beds until the market shakes out. Was that the correct stance, and what would it take for you to approve the next high-rise near campus?
Well, I think it definitely is the right answer. We're all waiting for the December APC report and study to come out. So I think until we have those numbers, it would be a little premature to jump into that. As far as supporting the -- what it would take to support the next high-rise, first of all, geography is going to be a major factor in that. We're committed to using State Street as a line of demarcation, if you will. Depending on where it comes up and how it shows, I'm not 100% sure right now the high-rises are the complete answer, but under the right circumstances and the right location, I could support that.
Thank you. And next to David Sanders, the same question. After the latest round of student-oriented high-rises and projects, West Lafayette has said it won't approve projects with additional student beds until the market shakes out. Is that the correct stance, and what would it take for you to approve the next major project near campus?
I believe it is the correct stance, and I think there's going to be largely agreement on many of these issues among the various candidates here today. I think it's described as a debate, but I really think that we all have the interest of West Lafayette in mind. I have been the person on the city council who has been probably most prominent in asking for a pause in development. I certainly agree with the councillor who just spoke on the fact that we should have a line of demarcation. We need to preserve the traditional nature of our neighborhoods. Purdue -- West Lafayette has always been considered a great place to retire. On every list of places to retire in the United States, West Lafayette always rises to the top. I believe that's a very important component, and that's something that we need to preserve.
Thank you. And now to Gerald Thomas. After the last round of student-oriented high-rises and projects, West Lafayette has said it will have a moratorium on those projects. Is that the correct stance, and what would it take for you to approve the next major project?
I believe that was the correct stance. We know that Purdue is not in the business of building dorms. They're in the business of educating students. So with the increase in freshman enrollment each year at Purdue, it's going to create crisis for our housing stock in West Lafayette. We need to look at each development on its own merits to make sure it, number one, fits the need of West Lafayette, and that the developers are interested in working with the city to make the development work for everyone. Our student population, again, in West Lafayette is rising. We need to find areas of them for affordable and attainable housing, and I believe that State Street redevelopment has welcomed developers into our area. We need, again, to make sure the developments are correct for the city of West Lafayette.
And James Blanco.
I would say that the city council did make the correct decision on that. I would say that one of the things we need to pivot to deal with is some of the dilapidated housing. We need to work on conquering some of the dilapidated housing such as waterfront housing, and some of these apartment complexes that are in poor, fairly poor, shape. And that's -- so in the hub, there were some issues. So we want to make sure that when we approve more development, it helps give more people room to have a place to stay. We're going to make sure that it's going to be quality, it's going to be safe, and it's going to be affordable housing for people, because that is what we need.
Thank you. Mr. Dietrich, 30 seconds rebuttal, or?
Well, again, I agree with Dr. Sanders. I think you're going to find a lot of agreement in many of these topics. The only comment, I guess, is that we've seen and heard that they're looking to encroach in different areas, northwestern, those kind of things, and I think that the council will continue to support State Street as our high-density area. I'm not sure that all of the high-rises are the affordable housing units that some students are looking for. They seem to be pretty pricey, because the cost is expensive to go up.
Thank you. And Mr. Sanders.
One of the worst things that can happen to a municipality is if there is overbuilding, and we wind up with empty apartments. We really have to take a step back and make sure that all of the units that we're creating are going to be occupied, are going to be -- have tenants there. If there's a downturn in the economy, that may not happen, and that's really a disaster for any community. So I fully support what we've done so far, but I think it is a time to stop and think about future development.
Thank you. And Gerald Thomas.
I agree with every statement that's been made here. We certainly need to look at the APC report that's coming out about student housing and see where we are as a city, and what our needs might be. I do think we need to protect our neighborhoods. We have land use plans in New Chauncey and other areas. I would hate to encroach on neighborhoods, so we need to be very careful about our developments. Again, look at the APC plan and see what's needed in the West Lafayette area.
Thank you. And James Blanco.
Well, you're going to find a lot of agreement, at least on this issue. Yes, I -- yeah, we want to make sure that the development is going to result in more affordable housing. We don't want to have a recession cause our housing to go empty. So I'm pretty much in agreement with the other candidates.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to follow up in that light of you've mentioned affordable housing. West Lafayette's property values and housing prices have increased significantly around Purdue and in the rest of the city, and young families want to move into the city and become part of that growth. What, if anything, should the city be doing to deal with bringing down rents and keeping home prices within reach of those young families? I think we start with David Sanders.
Yes, thank you. So I think that is one of the roles, working with the APC and the city council, to try to make sure that we have in place regulations that actually contribute to an increase in affordable housing. There are a number of things that the city council can do to try to regulate that locally, and I think that's a very important component of what we try to accomplish. We don't want to, on the other hand, depress property values. This would not be an advantage to current residents of the city. So we have to take that into, you know, both into account, that we want to make sure that there are stable values for the people who are currently residing, as well as trying to implement measures that will control the costs of new buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Gerald Thomas, do you want me to repeat the question?
Would you please.
Are you good to go? Okay, that's fine. West Lafayette's property values have increased significantly near campus and throughout the city with all the development going on, and young families are trying to get into West Lafayette schools and be part of that growth. What, if anything, should the city be doing to deal with keeping home prices and rents within reach?
Okay, along with talking about affordable housing, I think we need to discuss attainable housing. The market's going to pretty much demand what the housing cost is going to be. I believe the city is looking at working with HUD and our CDBG program, which is a program that works with underserved citizens and households, to see if we can flip maybe some homes in certain areas of West Lafayette. Instead of building sidewalks with CDBG funds, we should be looking at building attainable and affordable homes for lower and middle-income families that want to move into West Lafayette and take their sons and daughters into the West Lafayette school system.
Thank you. James Blanco, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure, go ahead.
All right, that's fine. The property values in West Lafayette have increased significantly in recent years, near campus and throughout the city, and young families are trying to move into the community and be part of the growth and the vibrancy that the city government's trying to create. What, if anything, should the city be doing to deal with making available affordable homes to young families, and also, you know, keeping rent prices within reach?
I think one of the most important things to think about here is that there are fairly affordable units, but the problem is that many of them are not of good quality. They've not been maintained that well. So I think one of the things, one of the focus of ours should be to make sure that those cheaper units are actually made up-kept, such as waterfront and other parts, other units that were, like, in the New Chauncey area. Some of these areas, it is mainly about upkeep. So once we can get these units out of their dilapidated status, then it becomes harder to raise rents, and we can deal with a lot of our affordable housing by improving the existing lot of housing we have right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dietrich. The West Lafayette property values have increased significantly, almost out of reach for many young families trying to move into the community, and for some renters who might not be associated with the university. What, if anything, should the city be doing to deal with making affordable housing attainable?
Well, the property values in West Lafayette are going up because it's a nice place to live. People want to live here, which rises the cost up. It's an open economy. It's an open market. The city's involvement is, can be, and should be more in the zoning issues, watching carefully on how that affects. We can't get into dictating housing prices, how they go. We can't dictate -- we can't fund upgrade or anything else into this. The only control the city has in this is through zoning, changing issues into that, and monitoring it carefully. Otherwise, it's a market that's driven by supply and demand. It's not a role for the city to play.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, 30-second follow-up, and if you can kind of include in there, what is your thinking about regulating rent, or?
So I believe that we actually can't -- I don't know if we can -- I'm not proposing necessarily regulating rent, but we can insist that there be a certain amount of affordable housing, including new developments, and that's something that I would advocate. I want to point out that this is something that I hear about from my constituents probably more than any other issue, and the positions that I take are based upon the feedback that I'm receiving, again, by email, by people button-holding me, and so on. I think that that's a very important part of my role as the city councillor.
Mr. Thomas.
I think there may be an opportunity for us to work with developers and kind of create an escrow account, so when they come in and look at developing, they put a percentage of the housing aside to look at affordable housing for middle and low-income families, whether it's in the development they're creating, or if it's an offsite development there. So I think we can work with developers and try and make some inroads there in that way.
Mr. Blanco.
Yes, so it is actually preempted. So rent control and direct measures to actually regulate rent, those are preempted by the state legislature. However, what we should do is try to incentivize affordable housing. So perhaps we could reduce parking requirements or so for units that offer a certain portion of affordable housing. That would be a potential solution that would help to incentivize the development of more affordable housing.
Thank you. And Mr. Dietrich.
Well, again, it's a market issue. Everybody wants to live right next door to where they work, where they play. There's not much room in the good areas, or the good being close, to Purdue University to start again and have affordable housing. Everything we can mandate is going to be in the periphery, which is problematic in itself. It comes down, again, to a supply and demand issue. The city can control some things, but it can't control proximity.
Thank you very much. And as I stated earlier, the questions were created in collaboration between the sponsoring organizations, as well as the area high schools. I'd like to introduce Tim Carnahan, a senior at West Lafayette Junior Senior High School, and he will ask the next question.
Thank you. Our next question will be starting with Mr. Thomas. How would you prioritize city spending between creating new downtown developments and aging housing stock and aging infrastructure such as roads? And where do you think the city should place its focus?
I think the city should place its focus on new downtown developments. People would like to live in downtown, near shops, hotels, restaurants, kind of a new vibe for the city. We still do need to obviously work on city roads and infrastructure, so it's a double-edged sword here. We need to focus on both areas.
All right. Mr. Sanders, would you like me to repeat the question?
Please do.
How would you prioritize city spending between creating new downtown developments and aging housing stock and aging infrastructure such as roads?
So I'm not sure that we actually need to prioritize them. The funding mechanisms that are available for those different things are -- they come from different funding sources, whether it's TIP funds or from the taxes that City West Lafayette collects. I think we need to be doing both those things. I don't think that we should allow our streets to decay, or, you know, other parts of the city to founder, just because we're developing State Street. And I think we actually, as a team, are succeeding with that. We are succeeding. We're going to be redeveloping a new city hall. We have a new recreation center. We are -- I'm very -- I have very good trust in the engineering department here, as, again, I work with them on the Traffic Commission. So I think that it's not a matter of choosing one over the other. I think that we can do them all effectively.
Mr. Dietrich, how would you prioritize city spending between creating new downtown developments and aging housing stock and aging infrastructure such as roads?
Well, the new downtown plan is a long-term plan. It's going to be spread over quite a few years. Incidentally, when you're talking about housing, again, goal number two, one of the objectives of goal number two in the October draft of that is affordable housing. Moderate to affordable housing is part of that downtown process. I think that needs to be our long-term focus as a city. I'm not concerned that our roads are going to suffer from end-to-decade because we're focusing on that. Our budget is very sound. We have good strength in our infrastructure right now. I'm not concerned that it's either-or, but I do think our focus needs to be long-term as city leaders, and focusing on what the downtown will look like.
And finally, Mr. Blanco, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure thing.
How would you prioritize city spending between creating new downtown developments and aging housing stock and aging infrastructure such as roads?
To the degree we need to actually prioritize, I would say that we want to make sure to work on upkeep, because broadly, if we're wanting to -- if we're concerned more about budget, upkeeping a building is much cheaper than just leveling it and replacing with a new one. So that would be -- so if we're going to prioritize one over the other, we should prioritize making sure the current existing structures are in good shape, and that they provide decent housing, and they provide safe places to live.
Thank you, Mr. Blanco. We'll now head back to Mr. Thomas to offer a 30-second rebuttal.
Again, I think all three candidates here have put out some great ideas. I agree with most of them. Again, it's not an issue of prioritizing, but making sure that both issues are thought through carefully, and that we make sure we budget to take care of both issues.
Mr. Sanders, would you like to offer a rebuttal?
In my time as city councillor, I've met with the heads of every single department in the city administration, and I feel fairly confident that they are all spending their money wisely. I talked with the head of our sanitation department, and he was really showing me all the different ways that they are repurposing and reusing, and trying to make sure that their dollars go as far as possible. The other thing which I can assure you is, when I get numbers put in front of me, I will scrutinize every single number and try to make sure that it's -- money is being spent wisely.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. And Mr. Dietrich, would you like to offer a rebuttal?
I think the city's got a very good track record in properly financing their projects. The State Street project is a flagship in that. With the innovation that they showed with that, we took a project, got it done in less than three years. It would have taken us 20 years under a bond system and been much more expensive. I think we've got a good enough track record that I'm not concerned at all about financing a long-term project.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Blanco.
Well, I mean, mainly, yeah, let's -- I think we should mainly work on keeping -- being ready for the developments that's coming up, but, I mean, otherwise, there's not much more to say.
All right. Thank you. And our next question will be starting with Mr. Sanders, and it's, what's the best thing West Lafayette can do to position itself to attract young professionals and keep new Purdue grads in the city? Or should that even be a city goal?
I think that's a great question, because I think it should be a city goal. Purdue is a great resource to have, and I believe that Purdue is working with the city to create new facilities, new businesses, that will retain people locally. And we need to consider carefully about how we're going to make sure that the land is available, that the zoning is appropriate, and we -- but we also do have to take into consideration whether the developments are in the long-term interest of the city of Lafayette. We have to think very carefully about issues of tax abatements, and how are our tax increment funds being used. And I want -- I'm not stating a firm position on what we should be doing, but I do think that every single time these issues are brought to our attention, we need to be taking a careful look and looking actually at the numbers, the dollars, what is going to come in, and what is going to go out each time.
Mr. Thomas, what's the best thing West Lafayette can do to position itself to attract young professionals and keep new Purdue grads in the city? Or should that even be a city goal?
I think it should be a city goal. We are always looking to have new young families move into the West Lafayette School District. We look for young families to come in and make significant changes and upgrades to our city. We need to certainly work with Purdue in the airport district, where they're bringing in new companies, like Saab and Rolls-Royce, where jobs can be available for new young families. Purdue Re... Purdue Research Park, it continues to expand to bring in new jobs for new young, young professionals. Along with that comes the housing issue. We need to make sure that we have affordable housing, attainable housing for young families that wish to stay in here in West Lafayette and make what's that, their home.
Mr. Blanco, what's the best thing West Lafayette can do to position itself to both attract young professionals and keep new Purdue grads in the city?
I think there are two things. One is that we work with nonprofit organizations such as Ascend Indiana, they're, that are in the business of making sure that people have good opportunities such as jobs and, and others. And also to work with Purdue, and it is our work, we want, we want to make sure that you don't just, that we have people stay here. There is a lot of value in that. So I do think it is a priority that we have people not just leave every four years. There's value in we have people actually stay here. So let's work on that.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. Dietrich, what's the best thing West Lafayette can do to position itself to attract young professionals and keep new Purdue grads within the city?
Clearly, it's, it's high-paying, smart jobs. Saab is a great example coming in. Bringing in 300 jobs to the, to the area that are all the kind of jobs we would like to have in West Lafayette. Rolls-Royce, another example. But as city leaders, we have to be prepared to be creative with reasonable incentives and to, to look forward to and be able to provide our tax abatements, appropriate tax abatements with this. Companies are looking for areas that are embracing those concepts. We can't be seen as being a stone wall for that area.
All right. We'll go ahead and move back to Mr. Sanders to offer a 30-second rebuttal.
I think actually one of the most important things is the quality of life here in West Lafayette. So I believe that that, an investment in making sure that we have a high quality of life, continuing high quality of life in, in, in West Lafayette is the best way to attract and retain people. The other thing is, and this is something that I've devoted a fair amount of my time on the city council to confront, is to make sure that we're a welcoming community, that we're a welcoming community to all members of society, to people of all races, ethnicities, international affiliation. And that's something that's very important, I think.
Mr. Thomas.
Agree again with what's been stated here. It is important that we welcome new members into our community, make them feel welcome. And again, bringing in jobs into the airport district, Purdue's $1 billion investment into our city is going to be very important to keep young families into our area, again, attending, attending West Lafayette High School and becoming a great member of our community.
Mr. Blanco.
So I would say that it is important that we have, it is about quality of life. It is about, we want to have walkability, we want to have affordable housing, good-paying jobs. But however, I would not support tax abatements. Tax abatements, I consider a use, a poor use of taxpayers' dollars, because there's plenty of evidence that companies will choose a city regardless of whether they get a tax abatement from one city or another.
And finally, Mr. Dietrich.
Well, I didn't think I would say this tonight, but I have to disagree with the previous councillor. Tax abatements are a fact of life. It's an investment for our community to bring in the right corporations. It's not free money. It's often done for equipment change, those things that add to jobs coming to there. So I would stay firm with my concept that we need to look at tax abatements on a regular basis when appropriate and, and reasonable incentives also to bring the right kind of company in.
All right. Thank you. And I'll be handing the questioning back over to my fellow moderator this evening.
Thank you very much. Let's see if we can move around a little bit, and I'm a little confused as to who we should start with. Anybody keeping track? If you could go back to...
I believe I was the first or the last time, but...
Okay. We're going to start with Mr. Thomas this time. If you had to give an elevator pitch about the direction of West Lafayette over the past four you, four years, what would you say? What's the elevator pitch about what's been accomplished and what would you say is making the city better?
My elevator pitch would be that, again, the quality of life here is amazing. We have 40-plus miles of trails, parks, system is amazing. Happy Hollow Park, we drove through there today, just a beautiful setting. Green space within the city, we keep expanding that. My elevator pitch would be this is a great place to live, to raise a family, great school systems, great opportunities for young families. And, over the last four years, I think we have grown the city considerably, but have grown it to the point where we have made some, some gains in housing stock for young families. And hopefully, we can, again, attract more young families into our school system.
Thank you. Mr. Blanco, if you had to give an elevator pitch about what the city of West Lafayette has accomplished in the past four years, what would you say and what would you say is making the city better?
So I'm a more recent resident of West Lafayette. I've been a resident since I was a student. I entered in 2014. So I've witnessed quite a number of changes. I witnessed the State Street project because it was, it was about to begin right when I started living here. So I'm really excited about our inclusivity. We have so many people from so many other coun, so many countries, and it's, that's one of the things that I've really loved about living here, is I've been able to meet so many people from so many other, so many countries. And I think that is one of the things, that is what I would say is a wonderful part of our city. Probably the most wonderful part of our city is, is our international community and how welcome we are to people from all walks of life.
Thank you. Mr. Dietrich, if you had to give an elevator pitch about the direction that West Lafayette has taken the past four years, what would you say and what would you say has made the community better?
I'm, I'm confident that the vast majority of people I talk to in the elevator, out of the elevator, would agree with me that the city is definitely headed in the right direction. With the annexation of Purdue University, the completion of State Street and what it's brought for different types of transportation, intermingling all of the, the bikes, the scooters, the cars, additional housing into that area, the environmental strides we've made just through, just through wastewater treatment over the last four years with the, with the increase, the reduction of CSOs, combined sewer overflows, the grinder that we've got in there, and I, all the issues that the councillor, Thomas mentioned, the parks, the green space, those kind of things are exploding. The city is definitely in the right direction with that.
Thank you. And, Mr. Sanders, if you had to give an elevator pitch about the direction the city has taken in the past four years, what would you say and what would you identify as making the community better?
One thing I have to emphasize is that we work extremely well as a city council along with the mayor of West Lafayette and the administration. And we also work extremely well with our partners on the other side of the river. So what's great about West Lafayette is that we work together as a community and with our partners on the other side. And I think that's going to be very important for the future development of the Riverside, West Lafayette, and so on. The other thing that I'd like to mention is that the, all of the development, all of the great innovation which has happened, has happened within our available resources. The council and the mayor have worked together to act in a very responsible fashion with the resources that we have available and along with the redevelopment commission. So I'm, I'm very glad that we're not spending money that we don't have in order to have the development. We're able to achieve development with the money that we actually have.
Thank you. Gerald Thomas, 30 seconds to follow up.
Again, I agree with everyone that's, that's been said, counter Dietrich, again, stated very well, the quality of life here is, is amazing. We're attracting young families because of the park system, the trail system, the jobs that are coming available in the research park and the airport park. So my pitch would be come and, come and enjoy us.
Thank you. Mr. Blanco.
I'm just excited about the community we have in West Lafayette, and that's something that I think it's even gotten better in the past four years. And if I was wanting to recruit, ask somebody to live here, I would say that you have the opportunity to almost live worldwide just within the same town. There are people from so many different countries, it's a wonderful place to live.
Thank you. And Mr. Dietrich.
The one topic we didn't discuss is how safe West Lafayette is. If it's not the, it's one of the safest Big Ten schools there are. We've got an excellent public safety team. Our fire department's made great strides. Our police department is second to none. The streets of West Lafayette are safe, and that's, that's a huge plus.
And Mr. Sanders.
So there was mention of the trail system, which I also enjoy very much and use quite a bit. And it's another example of where my constituents actually played an important role. They were telling me about the fact that the trail to Salisbury had been closed for a while. I know it was being repaired. So I brought it to the attention repeatedly of the administration, and I was able to push them a little further in speeding up that project. And I was actually, had the privilege of cutting the red ribbon. I had made so much noise about the completion of that project, I still have a little bit of that ribbon that I've been able to save.
Thank you. And Mr. Thomas.
Again, it's a quality of life issue, I think, that's important here. And we need to continue to do what we have been doing to, again, attract young families and residents into West Lafayette.
Thank you. The next question, I think we'll start with Mr. Blanco this time. The city and Purdue spent $120 million on the State Street project with the idea of spurring business and housing development. What, if anything, should the city be doing to take care of homegrown businesses in that mix? How do you make room for small businesses?
It's important to hear out the people who own these businesses, the people who work at these businesses. We want to make sure that all of the development we have and the development in the future, we're addressing their concerns. We want to make sure that to the degree we can include them in, in these projects, we want to do just that. It's really, it's important that we do that, and we, we want to have people, communities, special businesses that are here, small businesses, and that's really important that we make sure that they onboard.
Thank you. Mr. Dietrich, the city and Purdue spent $120 million on the, dollars on the State Street project, in part to spur business and housing development. What, if anything, should the city do to make room for homegrown businesses in that area?
It's a very difficult question to answer. The area that we've created is, is A1. Real estate and all of the buildings are extremely desirable, which rates rent considerably higher than, than some other places. Putting a, a homegrown business or a mom-and-pop business on State Street is going to be difficult just because of the rent alone. I, I think that as a community, we do embrace all kinds of, of businesses, startups and those kind of things. But, but as far as being able to control that or to artificially keep them in the State Street area, I think is difficult for the city to do. You know, we've, we've seen the expansion of food trucks and those kind of things. They're in and around campus and city all the time. That, to me, is an example of how the local can interact with this, maybe not paying rent and buying square footage, but also interacting with the, with the community.
David Sanders, do you, would you like me to repeat the question? Okay, go ahead.
I think the farmer's market actually provides a great example of how local businesses can work together with the city of West Lafayette to provide options for the local community. And I actually believe that we can solve a number of problems. For example, something that I'm very concerned about through my work at Purdue, which is food insecurity amongst students. I think if we have more local options, potentially including some, a food cooperative in that, in the, the State Street area, I think that that could actually serve the community. I believe that it can be a profitable business, and I think that's the sort of thing that we should be able to encourage through our developmental process.
Thank you. And Mr. Thomas.
Small businesses, I believe, are the backbone of our community. We need to make sure that we try and protect those businesses, that they can thrive in our city. As Steve Dietrich said, it's going to be difficult to, to bring those small businesses along State Street because of just the cost of, of rental. The, the city needs to work with those small businesses, see how they can make those things work for everyone. Chancery Hill Mall is going to be developed shortly, and there'll be a hotel and hopefully areas for small businesses to step in and have a place there. So, again, the city needs to work with those businesses to make sure that we can include them in our, in our plans for the future.
James Blanco, 30 seconds to follow up.
I think it's just a matter of listening. We make sure that we hear out the small business owners, the people working at those businesses, and we make sure that their voices are heard, that we are not just, we're not just going to ignore them, we're not just going to go forward without considering their interests.
Thank you. Mr. Dietrich.
I'm not sure there's a rebuttal left on this. To be quite honest, it, it just comes down, again, it's, it's a market issue. Businesses will operate as long as there's profit to be made. Encouraging students and locals to attend and, and support those businesses is about all you can do. When it stops being profitable, they're going to shut their doors or they're going to relocate.
Mr. Sanders.
I do think that there are places like Vons, which are really treasures in West Lafayette, and they're very important to members of the community, and we should do whatever we can to try to preserve places like that. And we can use zoning, we can try to protect places such as Vons against development. And I think that that's an important part of the mix in trying to retain local business. I do think that that local component is extremely important for our community.
Thank you. And Mr. Thomas.
Again, small businesses, I think, drive the community, and there are many small businesses that have been here for many, many years, and people revere them and bring their business to them. So we need to make sure that we can bring them into the mix of what we're doing as far as development within the city of West Lafayette.
Thank you. We'll start now with Mr. Dietrich. What is one amenity that West Lafayette does not have that the city needs that you would work to attract during the next four years?
Wow, good question. From listening to most of the people that I bump into along the streets, it would be a Trader Joe's. Everybody seems to want a Trader Joe's. But we, we offer so much in this community, and it was mentioned earlier about our, our strong relationship with Lafayette. Between the two cities, we provide a lot of amenities. I don't know that one thing that's out there that I've seen traveling around that I think we have to have that, maybe a particular store or a particular food item or whatever it is, but not, not an entity or not a, an industry of any kind that we're lacking.
Mr. Sanders.
I believe that better utilization of the waterfront. I actually, I believe the Wabash River has tremendous value for our community, for both of our communities, and I believe that making it a friendlier place, a, a place potentially of greater recreational opportunities is something that I'm pretty sure we're going to achieve in the future if we keep our focus on that particular issue. So we're talking about amenities that the public can enjoy. That's one that I would really believe is, should be our focus going forward.
Mr. Thomas.
Hearing from some of my constituents, what they would really like to see in West Lafayette is a nice white tablecloth dining area, which you can go and have a nice meal. It's not very expensive, but you can enjoy a nice quiet evening with friends and family. And not a chain restaurant, but a nice white cloth table restaurant, and we can bring in families and business, business associates and colleagues to have a nice meal with.
Mr. Blanco.
Just as councillor Sanders said, we, it would be great if we worked on the, the riverfront area, the, which is Levy Plaza as it is right now. It'd be great if we had a public space, maybe, maybe for concerts or maybe for just walking around. But that's, that'd be a great thing we could do.
Mr. Dietrich, anything to add?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Sanders.
Actually, just from a professional perspective, I believe we need a museum about viruses. I don't believe that there is a single museum dedicated to viruses anywhere on this planet, and I think that would distinguish West Lafayette from everywhere else, and we're in the perfect position to create such a, an entity. It's not just my own work, it's actually a specialty of Purdue University of something we, you know, astronauts are pretty good, viruses are really great.
Thank you.
And so I think that that's something that we should develop in the near future.
Mr. Thomas, what's your specialty?
I have no rebuttal to that. I'm sorry.
Mr. Blanco.
I have no rebuttal.
All right. Thank you very much. We're winding down the clock, and so we'll do one more question real quickly. No, we will go to closing statements. Each candidate has two, one minute to make a closing statement, and we will start with Mr. Blanco. Mr. Blanco?
Well, thank you all for watching or for showing up here. I'm James Blanco, I'm just, I'm running to stick up for the working people, for the students here. I am a renter, and I was wanting to keep our city going forward in helping to develop more affordable housing and improve the housing we have right here in West Lafayette.
Thank you. Mr. Thomas?
I had the privilege of attending the naturalization ceremony that was held a couple of weeks ago in West Lafayette, where 98 new citizens were naturalized into the U.S. and about, from 26 different countries. I sat next to a lady from the Social Security Administration here in West Lafayette. We had a chance to talk about the ceremony and how inspiring it was and the cities that we've visited within, around the country and around the world. And after that conversation, it all came back down to, man, this is a great city that we live in. This West Lafayette could be a city that I could retire in. There's just so many amenities, so many things that can be enjoyed here with a major research university like Purdue University, parks and the trail systems, again, services that we can count on. It's a beautiful place, and again, it comes down to quality of life. I'm proud of what we've been able to do in this city, and I thank, again, the League of Women Voters who are having us this evening.
Mr. Sanders?
So my name is David Sanders. Very privileged to have been your councillor these past four years. Want to thank the League of Women Voters, the media, West Lafayette High School, which is right across the street from where I live, for making this event such a, such a really terrific opportunity for all of us. I believe that what we need to do is embrace the future while treasuring the past. The character of West Lafayette is extremely important to the people who live here, and I believe that many of the people who come here like West Lafayette for the parts that actually exist there today. And I think it's very important that we preserve those while modernizing, while expanding, while working together with Purdue to bring jobs to the area, to have high-quality businesses and opportunities for students and people coming to West Lafayette.
Thank you. And Mr. Dietrich, your closing thoughts?
Again, thanks to those responsible for organizing this event, the voters here and those listening at home. It's unfortunate that Norris Wong and John Myers were not allowed to participate tonight. As a former judge and prosecutor, they'll bring a unique set of skills to the council. A while ago, I introduced Resolution 615, welcoming all people to the city of West Lafayette, celebrating diversity and opposing discriminatory actions of any kind against any person in the city. My resolution in part stated, whereas in partnership with Purdue University, West Lafayette celebrates and respects its eclectic population and celebrates the enrichment that this population brings to our community and quality of life. This legislation highlighted the many welcoming statements our city's made over the years dating back to 1968, when my father served in the council. I have the experience, the drive, and the skills to continue serving my hometown. Again, my name's Steve Dietrich, and I ask for your vote.
Thank you to all the candidates for appearing. We appreciate that. Again, we did request that the, all candidates have an opportunity to speak this evening, and due to lack of response or negative response, we were not able to bring you all of the city council candidates to speak their minds so that you would know how they would address certain issues. We do thank the four men here this evening for the at-large seats. There are three seats and four candidates, so at least we have given you an opportunity to cast an informed ballot. We ask that you do go vote. The League of Women Voters has its website, 411vote, and you can check out candidates on the League of Women Voters site. You can also check out the Star City News and Broadcasting websites, Journal and Courier, and also WBAA. We've all partnered together so that you could have an opportunity to cast an informed ballot, and we appreciate your attention to this evening and spending this hour with us. Again, thank you. This has been a Star City Broadcasting production in cooperation with several other organizations. Good night.